Live at five. So we start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge, appreciate that the land on which we gather is the traditional enseated territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation, and we have occupied this territory since time immemorable. Call to order. Just again want to do a big shout out for last night's meeting, and our new C A O is off and running. He was at a meeting this morning, did a press conference or a press interview, and also want to thank our interim C A O for the fine job she's been doing with us over the last couple of months. We're going to miss you, Sue. You know, thank you very much. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Approval of agenda? Moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Matar. All those in favor? Counselor McLeary? Counselor Dron?
In favor?
So we have Counselor Bob Dron calling in. I believe Counselor Beck may be calling in, and we do not, I don't think we had received any word from Counselor Bernard. So we'll move on. Discussion items, number four A, one environment sustainability resolution. Award R E O, R E O I, lease of city row for e-scooter rentals. Counselor McKinnon, do you want to speak to that, or you just want to go right to the resolution? What's your choice? Okay, okay. Can we read the resolution first?
Your worship. If I had it on the right way, we're good now. So we have environment sustainability's only resolution this evening. Your worship, moved by Counselor Trevor McKinnon and seconded by Counselor Norman Beck. Oh, I'm sorry, it's seconded by Counselor Mitchell Twill. Be resolved that council awards Epic Electric Scooters a lease agreement for 18 locations within the city right-of-way for one operating season, renewable for up to two further seasons at the city's discretion, and that mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you, your worship. I'm definitely prepared to support this resolution. I just wanted to ask, we, over the years, we've had struggles with the scooters in the city, and so I just want to get a clear picture on when we get calls from residents with these complaints, whether they're from the, this company that's going to be using our right-of-way or not. Now, this is under environment sustainability. In the past, it was under Public Works because of the right-of-way. So I just want to know who I'm directing my concerns to, if there are any, which department, who I should call, who I should direct the residents to, et cetera. But like I say, I'm definitely prepared to support this resolution. So I'm not sure, I guess I'll direct that to Trevor, because it came under his committee. Counselor McKinnon, I'm sorry, but I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure where, just want that clarification. Thank you.
And I know it's regarding right-of-way, but is that also about helmet use, too? Is that another concern?
Yeah, I mean, that would be probably kind of going outside the box a little bit, but yes, just, just the concerns with this going through different departments and different areas. I just want to know who it is I would direct the concerns, questions to as we proceed into the season.
Thank you, deputy. Counselor Trevor McKinnon?
No Ward eight? What? No, then, I think, you always say which ward we're from, so. Thank you, deputy, for your question. From what I understand, this falls under economic, sorry, environment sustainability. It started with economic development, then it went to police, and it came to us, because it falls under the act of transportation realm. Jessica can correct me here afterwards. I think when there's issues, complaints come in, will probably be directed to the police department for violations, whether they're going down one-way streets, not wearing helmets. Most of the complaints that I believe what we're hearing from residents are from privately-owned scooters and not the green ones from TAF. So if the people that are complaining are able to identify and say it's the green e-scooters, then we'll have an issue. We can have a discussion with the contractor. But the green TAF's company cannot go on the boardwalk. The scooters will be shut off if they go down around Victoria Park. There's certain areas, sidewalks, they, they won't be able to run on. So when we get complaints of these e-scooters going down sidewalks, it's going to be private, more than likely privately-owned scooters, which will have to be addressed with police services. Does that answer your question, or do you need more?
So TAF is also a private entity, also, right?
But his e-scooters are part of the business, which are GPSed, and he has software running those.
But it's a private enterprise.
Yes, it's a private enterprise, but not privately-owned scooter, like you could own your own e-scooter and go down the street.
Thank you for that clarification.
Debbie?
Can I go with Counselor Ramsey first, and then Bernard, and then come back to you? Can we? Counselor Ramsey?
Thank you, that, my, I couldn't find it in here. Is there hours of operation? Because I know last year, being with the police, they said something about, he says he runs them pretty late at night, and that's when he got most of his business. I just wondered, are we putting operational hours on it, or are we allowed to do that? I, I don't know, like if it goes from eight in the morning to 11 at night, or 12 at night? I just sort of like to have an answer to that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramsey. I do recall that conversation last year, and TAF did indicate that majority of his business is after the bars close at night, and hours were going to be put on it, but I am going to refer this to Jessica. She may have been familiar with any of those conversations with TAF.
Yeah, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not recalling the hours of operation off the top of my head, but I can look into that and get back to you. I, I know that they will be out there 24/7 in the right-of-ways, obviously, but whether they're activated and unactivated outside of certain hours, I'll look into that and let you know.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. So now that this is under a different department, last year, in order for this company to operate their scooter business and use the public right-of-way, there was some limitation on the hours of operation, and I know there was some pullback on that, that, you know, that the operator was concerned because they would like to do this later hour work. I just want to, you know, if it's none of our business, and we stay in our lane, and all we're doing is leasing out the right-of-way, that's fine, but that wasn't the case in previous years. So if that's the new normal, I wonder what happened to get to this new normal, that we didn't do this in previous years when he was still doing the same thing, leasing the public right-of-way. Thanks.
Counselor McKinnon?
I'm not sure on that one, but yeah, Jessica.
Defer to Jessica?
Sure, I'll just add one thing. So this report in front of you is not about the business and its operation, and whether they can, you know, use scooters in Charlestown. It's about, do we allow them to use city right-of-way to park them? Because otherwise, they are free and clear to use private property, and they're out there now, running it. So it's just, this report is just a question, do we allow them to park them within the city's right-of-way? It's not, are they operating? How are they operating? What hours are they operating? It's, are, is the city giving them permission to put the scooters in the right-of-way?
Michael? Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. I'm just wondering, has it been flushed out on any liabilities to the city? I know there was lots of talk last year about getting them to wear their helmets while they're on the scooters. There was supposed to be some technology coming through that will allow that. So has that been flushed out as far as liability to the city by using the city land to lease these?
Counsel McKinnon?
That was discussed, the insurance was discussed at the committee meeting, and TAF calls his own insurance, the city as a second holder, but we're not liable for what happens. And as Manager Jessica mentioned, we, we're not here to break down the operational requirements of him running his business. That is police issue, it's an enforcement issue if they don't wear their helmets. We are here to see, are we going to allow them to use our land for parking them around the city?
Yeah, and I'm not here to, I'm not here to discuss whether, whether, you know, the resolution says this or that. At the end of the day, does the city have liability? To scapegoat it and say, you know what, no, we're just here to talk about this? No, this could be a liability to the city. I want to know if it is or not. The city has the right to set hours and everything else they want, whether it's private property or public property. My question is, if it's on city property, and somebody wants to sue the city because they had an accident not wearing their helmets, is the city liable? Easy question.
May I answer or defer?
We can ask for a deferral, but I think, I did speak to our insurance person, because he has brought this up to me, and that's why I said, like, the city will be named in if something did happen, but it's TAF's insurance that is the primary responsibility for their, his insurance, not the city's.
So just as long as it's flushed out, because you see, you see Counselor McKinnon, for somebody to have a protest now, they need to have insurance.
Yep.
So that's insurance for liability against the city. So I'm assuming that if we're going to go to scooters, if we need it for protest, we probably want to make sure that we have it for, for people who lease the scooters.
Yeah, and he has insurance.
Do you want to, do you want to cooperate with, with the manager? Just both of you? I think you're answering the question. He does have insurance.
Yeah.
Yes, so through, Counselor McKinnon is correct. In the expression of interest that was posted on the city's website, which was reviewed by the city's insurer, was a list of requirements, which he has to abide by, including naming the, yes. And just to, to also add to that, so this is a follow-up to an earlier council resolution, directing staff to post an expression of interest on the city's website for the public private companies to enter into a lease agreement with the city, or to express, express interest in that.
Yep.
And that's, that's what Counselor, Counselor McKinnon was saying. They do have insurance, right? TAF does. I think it's more the private owners. No, that's a good question. It is. Counsel Twill?
No, that was brought up at our committee meeting, and it was made quite clear. Michael, I think you recall that, and in fact, you answered the question. It's incumbent upon them to have insurance, and where there's an intervener. But nonetheless, I think they have insurance. I'm not sure of the total amount. Is it $2 million? It's $2 million. So as far as, you know, liability goes, yeah, they, they, that's one of the prerequisites, and that was discussed at our committee meeting, and that's why, one of the reasons why we felt comfortable moving it forward.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Deputy Mayor?
This is actually my third question, and do I have permission to ask the third question on this resolution?
You're the deputy. And you're the mover and the secondor, so it's, it's your motion.
Okay, I just, I just wondered, then who, who do we find out the hours of operation? We went through all this the last few years, so I just, I get a lot of calls being in the area, and it probably has nothing to do with environment and sustainability, but this is the only place that we're going to see this file on these e-scooters. So I'm just wondering if in the expression of interest was, was it back to those same hours of operation that police had identified last year with him through Dale Johnson? Or is this completely different? I'm just, I'm just wondering if clarity.
So Counsel McKinnon, I think you're addressing, this resolution, and Jessica also addressed it, this is about just the right-of-way, correct? This is not about the police nothing. That falls to police, protection emergency. Did you want to answer, or do you want to get assistance from?
Just like we've said, it's the operational part of the business of hours that they have to run. Like, I know TAF addressed that last year, said he would look at it. His software will adjust it if the city comes back and says, these are your hours, but I don't know if we have, where that will is going to come from and tell them you can't operate these past 1:00, 1:00 a.m., 2:00 a.m., 3:00 a.m., whatever. We, this is just for the right-of-way, for us to allow him to park his vehicles.
Michael? Is that all right we call in, Michael?
Don't be answering my question.
Ms. Planner?
Thank you, and through the chair, I was just bringing up the previous license agreement from, I believe it was last year, and I don't see that we have hours of operation listed within that, so that, and we just had confirmation as well from Anna, who's been working on this file very closely. The operation would be 24/7. Again, it's not stipulated in the previous license agreement, which expired last year. The current agreement, I guess, being considered by council for the use of the public right-of-way does not, you know, contemplate any hours of operation being imposed upon the operator, no different than any other operator in the city that chooses to operate on privately-owned property.
Question?
Question's called.
Questions called? All those in favor? Okay, I just need to, all those in favor? Counsel McCabe? Yep. Counsel Dron?
In favor?
Okay. Can we go to the next one? Is that Counsel Twill? You want to read the resolution?
Counsel Twill, you're comfortable with me just proceeding to resolution for the Public Works? Okay. Public Works only resolution this evening. Your worship is moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill, seconded by Counselor John McLeary, that as per the conditions of the public request for tender 2025 Street Resurfacing Package A, the submission of the Allen Construction Limited in the amount of $1,874,367.53, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. Last council meeting, I asked, we had a notice of motion on the floor where Public Works was going to back, go back and relook at a street and get back to me before this tender came out. I have not been notified or brought any information to that reconsideration, so I will not be supporting this package, because I was told I was going to get information before this tender was released.
Counsel Twill?
I recall you bringing, bringing up that street. I wasn't sure about whether or not your reconsideration would be reevaluated in time for this package, or Package B, for that matter. But what I will tell you is that our acting manager's here, he's made a note of it, and we will definitely have our senior staff in the department reevaluate that street and get back to you with a report. Because I don't believe this is the final packages. I think there's going to be more, Counsel McKinnon. So Package A and Package B, I think that's just a start. If, correct me if I'm wrong, so.
It usually is, but, it usually is, but I did ask for that to be reevaluated, and I would be gotten back to. I haven't been gotten back to. I haven't heard. It's one street, it's not a long street, it's not a big job, so I'm still not supporting it because it, it was a small request, I feel, so, thank you.
Hold on, Counsel Twill?
That's fair, that's fair. I understand what you're saying. Well, I will commit to you, is that our senior staff will do a reevaluation of that street that you've referenced, and hope to back to you in the next few days. That's the best I could do.
Okay, is that all right, Counsel McKinnon? Thank you for following up. Counsel Bernard, do you want to call the question? Question's called. All those in favor? Counsel McKinnon, yea, yea? Counsel Dron?
In favor?
opposed? Oh, okay. Okay, so this is just a second reading, is it? C A O phraser?
Yes, your worship.
Okay.
This is the second reading of zoning and development bylaw, to adopt bylaw PHZD 2091, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend sections of the zoning and development bylaw, bylaw PHZD 2 pertaining to Section 3.8.3B, Section 3.9.3B, Section 3.10.4, Section 3.15.4, and Appendix A. And that is whereas the bylaw, oh, sorry, and that's moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff and seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. And whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, as it pertains to zoning and development bylaw amendments, as attached, was read and approved the first time on May 13, 2025. a first time on May 13, 2025, be it resolved that said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff and seconded by Council Julie McCabe.
Shall I carry? Council Dron?
Pass.
Pass, okay. Council Beck? Absent. Okay. So I have on number five, it says motion to move into a closed session as per the Municipal Government Act, Section 119. Am I on the right one? I got my 4A and B, is there a C? What's... No, that, can't add it because it has to be 10 members of council have to be here. That's right. Right, and Council Beck is not, is not called in. And that should have been added to the agenda. So what... Package B. That would be Tender Ward 2025 Streets Resurfacing Package A. And we passed that one, but B was just discussed today at noon hour, right? Because I was up for a lunch meeting. Yeah, because special meetings, all councils have to be here. If it's a regular monthly meeting, it's the majority. Correct, Tracy? That's in the procedural bylaw?
That is correct.
Yeah.
All of council has to be present, and it has to be unanimous in order to add anything on the agenda that was not before the, before the agenda was posted.
Okay, thank you. So motion to move into a closed session as per the Municipal Government Act, Section 119, subsection 1E, a matter still under consideration on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision and about which discussion in public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations. And it's the fire underwriters survey. Moved by Council Ramsey, seconded by Council McKinnon. All those in favor? Council Dron?
In favor?
Okay.
Okay. Ready? Okay, motion to adjourn. Moved by Counsel McCabe, seconded by Counsel Bernard. Have a wonderful evening, everybody. Bye.